Okay, good afternoon, welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of April 27, 2021. This meeting is called to order. We don't need to do a roll call vote, everybody is in attendance, if you take note of that, please. And Ms. Barfield, introduce item number one for us.
Fund balance and community investment project update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council.
Mike Shaw.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Pleased to hear today to have to spend some time with you on a number of different topics. Leading off today's first presentation is our Budget Engineering and CIP Administrator, James Melanes.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Mayor, council. Pleased again to report the update on the fund balance projects. The purpose of today's presentation, again, is to provide an update on those projects. I've had some technical difficulties. Oh, there you go. Thank you. Again, the purpose of today's presentation is to update progress of the fund balance projects that were approved by council in the fall, and also to request consensus to transfer funds between projects. As a reminder, staff presented a little over nineteen and a half million dollars worth of fund balance projects to council at a workshop in October. At the end of that presentation, they requested that council provide some additional projects. Three were given. Staff returned in November with more information about those three projects, and consensus was given to move forward. I presented to you in February with an update. The list of approved projects is shown here, and I've got it listed out in the order in which they were presented to you, and that's the same order. I'm going to go over them today, with the exception of contingency. Like to hold off contingency till the end. As a reminder, this is a team effort. I have pretty generalized knowledge about all these projects, but if I don't have the exact answers, the relevant directors and department heads are here and available to answer your questions. The first of the projects is the pavement management, and I've got it here as the fund balance projects, to differentiate that from the ten point two million dollars that council authorized in June. That project is ongoing, and we've already spent about six point six million on that. The five million dollar commitment you made in October, we are moving forward with. We've treated already about the twenty of the fifty miles we promised we would treat, and the spend to date is around one point nine million dollars. And that spend to date is through March. Usually in construction, we bill through the end of the month, and it takes a couple of weeks after the end of the month to see those invoices, so we haven't seen April's invoices just yet. But we're well on pace to complete the fifty miles and spend all five million dollars. The next project is the community centers. That's for Rose Lane, Glendale, and O'Neill. If you recall, it was a five million dollar commitment, and I've broken this up into two parts, just like I did in February. Part one is what we could do right now. So we've already completed the roofing at all three centers. We've completed the HVAC, sorry, I've got allergies, at O'Neill and Glendale, and we still have to complete it at Rose Lane, but that'll be completed in May. The parking lots have all been treated, and we're starting work on the interior of the Glendale Community Center. That's about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars spent to date with those projects. The second phase that we wanted to look at was, this is a tremendous investment that you made in these community centers, and staff wanted to make sure that that commitment was long-lasting. And so we brought in a consultant to help us take a look at how those community centers, how they face the public, how they work, how you get from point A to point B within the centers. And so we asked to defer a few things, like the Wi-Fi, paint flooring at O'Neill and Rose Lane, and the furnishings. So the next three slides I'm going to show you are the concepts that the consultant was able to put together for us. The first of these is the Glendale Community Center, and I just want to highlight a couple of things. I actually commute past the Glendale Community Center a few times a week. I had no idea it was a community center. There's really no markings on it. You can see it's not really branded as a Glendale, as a community center. We also have the shade structure over the outdoor basketball court. That shade structure was damaged. So what we're looking to do here is to refresh the exterior, bring more glazing in, really brand it as a Glendale Community Center, and then get a more permanent structure over the basketball court. We've got some rough order of magnitude costing here for you. The study, design, and construction administration, should council give us consensus to move forward with these designs, we'll be bringing forward design contracts to you in May.
I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I guess, I don't know if it's a question or more of a, just a thought. I do understand when you say that the branding, not knowing that it's a community center. I like the way this is done on the bottom, except for, I wish that there was a way to do the one on the east-west street also.
Mayor.
Instead of just the north-south street.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is conceptual. It's just kind of taking an idea of what we can do. We're certainly not at a point yet that this is what is going to be the final design, but we'll take a note of that and make sure that we relay that to the architect.
Thank you. I know this probably isn't a question for you, Ms. Melanes, but what's the timeline? I mean, are they going to be done one at a time, and are they, are they open and operating now? And I'm not sure exactly what the status is of the community centers, so that, which is important, we're heading into summer.
I believe Mr. Burke is here to help.
Mayor, members of the council, the centers are currently not open. We are anticipating opening the Glendale Community Center, the one that's on the screen now, excuse me, this summer, because the renovations will be exterior. James, I got your bug, excuse me. The schedule is to come to the council in May, as James just mentioned, with a contract. We'll go through, working with engineering, the thirty, sixty, ninety percent drawings, permits, and then have them under construction. So we anticipate opening all three permanently or full-time, thank you, next summer, so probably eighteen months, just shy of eighteen months from right now.
Turn my mic up. If I could, so is the intention to do, to stagger them, or to do them all at once, or?
Mayor, members of the council, we haven't got to that detail yet. We're going to design them all together, and then we'll figure out the construction plan, with the exception of the Glendale Community Center, we think is the modest enough work that we'll be able to operate it and work around and still have the entrance and coming and going. So we believe we'll be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. The second community center is Rose Lane. Again, we want to refresh the exterior of the facility. As you can see, it's a block building. There's not a lot of natural light that enters that facility. The other thing that's really interesting is when you walk into the front of Rose Lane, you walk right in the game room. So that presents some security and logistic issues for staff. We're also transitioning from a model of a third-party care of this facility, as Mr. Burke kind of touched on, to staff managed. So we want to make sure that we're expanding the offices, we've got appropriate restrooms, storage, and then space for computer labs. And the costing, again, is there shown for you. We know the study, design, and construction administration costs, the study's already been completed, the design and construction administration costs will be presented in that agreement in May, and we have a rough order of cost on the construction and then miscellaneous costs. You'll see that on all three of these centers, miscellaneous costs being things like, we have to do asbestos and lead bait testing, we have art fees that we have to process per the ordinance. We want to refurnish and make sure there's equipment in these facilities, and that all goes into that miscellaneous costs. You see a grand total of one point two million dollars. The last project is the O'Neill Community Center. Again, we want to open it up, bring more natural daylight into the facility in the lobby. We want to expand the lobby, make it a little better, bigger for security and for logistics, expand the offices, storage, and restroom space. And again, all the costs are outlined there for your viewing. The next slide ties it all together. So it's our summary slide. Again, the commitment from this body in October was a five million dollar commitment. We've already got that five hundred and sixty thousand dollars completed scheduled work in the HVAC, the roofing, and the parking lots. If you combine the, those total amounts for the last three slides, it gets to three point six five seven million there on the three renovations. And then we also have this interest of fiber. So the city maintains a pretty significant fiber network that was put in mainly for our traffic management system. It is preferable, security-wise, for us to use that same fiber in our facilities, especially if we have city employees that are working there, and it also enables things like security cameras on a much more secure network. We are estimating the cost to bring fiber to those three locations at six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It brings your grand total to four million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand. So we're requesting that you provide consensus on these rough schematic designs, so we can move forward with the contract in May, and that we leave the remainder one to fifty-eight in the project as a contingency.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Because these are community centers, are they eligible for any of the broadband benefit FCC program? Have we checked that?
I have not, I'm not sure of the answer, ma'am, and I can get back to you on that.
I would, I would like at least to know for sure that they're not, that they're not eligible before we commit city resources, or we could do it as a contingency or something if they're not eligible. I know Mr. Lee and Ms. Moreno are working with that program. In fact, there's, I think, a webinar happening right now for more details on that, but it's something that I think we should at least explore, because it literally is directing connectivity to community centers. So there may be eligibility there. Thank you.
Do we have consensus to move forward and bring these contracts to you in May? Thank you. The next project on the list is Suave Ranch Park. As a reminder, there was an initial project that was brought forth by staff in October, and then an additional project that was added at the end of that meeting, and then again discussed in the November meeting. These two slides are for the first projects that were committed in October. There was a two point four million dollar commitment. When I spoke to you in February, I relayed that we had a three hundred thousand dollar contract on hand to get the HVAC replaced at the main house, guest house, and the packing shed. That's still on schedule to be completed in May. We also have since engaged a contractor to do the Ramadas. We had selected them previously, so we have them officially on now. I would like to touch on that, though. In between the time that I told you that we had selected them, and by the time we were actually able to commit to them, the price of lumber had gone up twenty-four percent. It is something that we're dealing with quite a bit here in engineering. But those two projects together are about nine hundred thousand dollars. We had another project that was in design and programming, and that was the exterior park lighting. We went into it with a design consultant with three principles. We wanted to maintain the historical look where appropriate. At a minimum, we wanted to maintain, but generally, we wanted to improve the lighting levels throughout the park, and then we wanted to switch over to LEDs for longevity and efficiencies. So we're seeing here on the kind of overhead view, I want to highlight a couple areas real quick. Obviously, the gray in the top right is the main library. That's not part of what we're looking at. And then the grass areas that are not highlighted are the athletic fields. Those lighting systems are working well, and they're efficient, so they were not included as part of this project. The red area at the top, and I apologize for the small scale here, that's the blacksmith's parking lot. The fixture we're going to match, almost matches a hundred percent of what's existing there, only it's LED. And then we've got a historical-looking lamp post for the walking areas and around the historical buildings. And this is actually, it's a very efficient LED light, but it's not going to be as efficient or as good of lighting levels as the LED Cobra Head kind of light that we're showing at the parking lots. So our consultant, because of the lighting standards, you know, is recommending that we go with that kind of Cobra Head look for the parking lots, for the dog park, the playgrounds, and the volleyball court. So that's what you're seeing here shown. I also do want to touch on that this does include moving some poles around. Again, we took a photometric outline of the entire park, so they are going to have to be doing some poles. It's not just putting new ones at these same locations. The total cost, as of today, is one point four four million, and we believe we can have this project completed by December one.
Thank you. Specifically for the lighting, LED lighting in the historic area, will we be able to choose a wavelength that isn't just that harsh, bright LED light, but go to one that's more of the softer tone like what we have out there currently?
Yes, I believe that is part of the package.
Thank you.
And they're working on that right now. We're at about sixty percent plans, but I'll make sure that that's part of it.
I think it's important, if I may, Mayor, not just for ambiance, but also for the wildlife and everything out there, too, just not to light it up like, you know, City Hall Parking Lot, for instance. Okay, thank you.
So if I can provide a summary here, the, again, the commitment was two point four million dollars, three hundred thousand dollars for HVAC, six hundred thousand for Ramadas, and one point four four million for the lighting. It brings us right under our request of two point four million dollars.
Any questions on this? Or consensus on that now?
At this point, we're just looking to update you, and that we're moving forward with it, sir. The next project is the Foothills Recreation Aquatic Center. Again, the commitment from council was one point nine million dollars. We have several projects that have already been completed or are programmed to be completed. Completed are, the flooring has been replaced, the skylight has been repaired, the parking lots have been refinished, and the full new wall has been replaced. The shade and fencing areas are currently undergoing renovations, and they'll be ready prior to the pool reopening, and staff are working on the aquatics upgrades throughout the facility. The one thing that we were not able to get under contract before the pool's reopening in June is the replastering of the pools. So that likely will occur in the fall. It's in a good condition, so that's not a harm. It's not going to affect anything for the swim season, but we do want to make sure we get an adequate contract. On the next slide, I have an accounting of it. So we asked for one point nine million dollars. We've completed about two hundred and fifty thousand, and those remaining projects I talked about that we haven't done, that we haven't finished yet, the fencing shade, the replastering, the continuation of the aquatics upgrades, is about one point one million dollars. You can see there's a, there's a savings there, a remainder in there, of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what I'd like to do today is to request that we move that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a series of new projects.
Is that five hundred and fifty, does that include the replastering after the season's over?
The replastering's in that one point one million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so for, like I said, we have about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're considering is uncommitted to date with projects. That's three, so what we're suggesting is to replace the two playgrounds with shade at Foothills Park, use seventy-five thousand dollars to plant trees and add, and painting at Fire Station 156, take forty thousand dollars to provide pavement maintenance at Thunderbird Conservation Park, a hundred thousand dollars in recreational equipment needs at FRAC. So that's separate than the other equipment, the HVAC and what have you, that we were doing. And then leaving the remainder there of that thirty-five thousand dollars for contingency for these projects above. Are there any questions about these projects?
Mayor? What's involved in the pavement maintenance at Thunderbird Conservation Park?
It would be similar to what we do anywhere else on the streets. It'd be like a slurry-type treatment. I don't know the exact treatment right now, but it would be another painting of the street to get us another seven years of life in those roads.
Okay, thank you.
And then my, my question for you, the seventy-five thousand for the trees, is that trees, or is that also fixed irrigation so the trees stay alive?
The, Mayor, that better include irrigation to make sure they stay alive. It doesn't make a lot of sense for us to put them in. So yes, it will be enhancing that, and the seventy-five thousand dollars also includes the painting of the fire station. That's not just for the trees.
Thank you, Mayor. Question on the hundred thousand dollars for equipment, what specific equipment is that?
Mr., I'm going to call Mr. Burke up again to help me answer that question.
Mayor, members of the council, we do have a list of equipment. I'm sorry I didn't bring it this morning, but we'll send it to the councils to, it's material to make the operation of center work better, like big screens for entry and some electronics to facilitate the operations of the facility.
Mayor, if I may, yeah, if you can get that to us, I just wanted to know if it was equipment with regard to the facility, such as motors pumps, et cetera, or is it equipment that enhances existing programs, or is it equipment that is needed for new programs? So I think it's important to know. And then lastly, I just want to say, I'm happy to have this in front of us to not only improve the FRAC, but continue to improve and keep it maintained. So, thank you. If you'll get that to us.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for my colleagues that the, the trees are in, in response to the request that I had, I provided each of you one of these, that there, our design guidelines say that tall, trees with tall canopies should be planted, and this is something that we've been dealing with, these residents that live in the surrounding, the homes that surround this fire station, that the, some of them can see that monopole inside their home. So the hope is, and the, and the pole is generating revenue for the city, and the hope is that these trees will soften, soften the impact of the view of that monopole, and so I appreciate the allocation of the money there. And I did have a question for Mr. Burke. Will the equipment needs at FRAC include a working public Wi-Fi?
Again, I don't have the list memorized here, but we'll check that. But we were talking with IT to make sure we brought that up to standard for Wi-Fi.
Yeah, I did, I did a district improvement project there, hoping to provide public Wi-Fi, but it never quite actually worked. So I mean, there is a demand for public Wi-Fi in that facility, so, thank you.
Yes, you bet.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, with regard to, that's interesting, with regard to the monopole, it sounds like there may be some trees that are going to be planted to bring that monopole back into city standards. If that's the case, and I'm all for it, but if that's the case, do all monopoles in the city meet the standards that Councilmember Tomachoff is requesting we meet? I don't want to take us off on a tangent, but if that is not the case, then we need to be looking at every single one and bring back to us, to the council, which ones are out of standard, and what is it going to take to bring them up? We can't just bring one up to standard because someone brought it up. It may be that they're all.
Thank, the mayor asked me to respond to that. I don't know that there are any other locations in the city, and I don't know if Mr. Friedline, or, and I don't see Mr. Bessler, but I don't know if there are any other locations in the city where there's a seventy-seven foot monopole in that close proximity to a residence. So that's what the case is here. So I don't know that there are any other locations, but we've heard from these residents regularly since that monopole was installed there at Fire Station 156.
And I, I think what I'd like to do is just make it clear that they're not changing the pole, they're planting large trees to block the view of the pole from the neighbors that are directly next to it.
Yep, I understand that.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you. I think it would be prudent to go ahead and, and do what's been suggested to mitigate the impact of that particular monopole, but I also think that Councilmember Al-Dham is on the right track, too, that we should do a survey throughout the city and see if there are other areas that are negatively affected, where the constituencies perhaps don't realize that we do have a design standard for these things, and that they have a right to live within that design standard. So let's not hold back one for the sake of the others. Let's do one now and move on with the rest. Thank you.
Mayor?
One, one note here. On the pavement maintenance here, as you'll see, one of the things we talked about internally, because the staff was, I think, has done a nice job of trying to be thoughtful in terms of these recommendations, the pavement condition at Thunderbird Conservation Park far exceeds the forty thousand dollars that's here. But through the park's master planning process, it very well could be that the location of some of the roadways, location of some of the parks, parking lot areas, could change as part of the master plan. So for us to go in and put a significant investment in today, and only maybe to have to either limit your options going forward, or have to change it, so what we've done is, I think, really bought us some time to go through that master planning process. We have money in our out years in CIP for Thunderbird Conservation Park. This will address some of the bigger issues of things like potholes and just some of the visual, but it doesn't box us into a corner. And again, I think this was good work done by, by James and Jim on this, to make sure that where we spend this money at can be leveraged and doesn't necessarily force us into a different direction down the road.
Mayor, if I, if I can, I'll, just in response to council request, I'll, I'll work with Don Bessler, and we'll come up with an inventory of all the monopoles and get back to you on meeting city standards. Some, some of those are in remote areas, and they don't get a lot of, we don't get a lot of feedback from them, so we, we act accordingly, but we'll, we'll give you an inventory and an update as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Mayor, council, do we have consensus to move forward with transferring the funds into these additional projects?
You do.
Okay, thank you. The next project on the agenda is the Heroes Park Lake. In October, council gave consensus to move forward with an additional one point two five million dollar commitment for the lake. As discussed in February, that bought you three things. One, it confirmed the size of the lake. It added amenities, additional Ramadas, a second fishing pier, a fountain, some additional turf and landscaping. And then it starts the project this fiscal year instead of waiting for July. We have, the contractor is under contract. We're going to be giving him a notice of proceed on Thursday. He'll be mobilized on site this weekend. So you'll be seeing a lot of activity out there very soon. That being said, the total funding right now is, exceeds that of the, what we're estimating the costs are at. And we've had some internal discussions. We just want to make sure we're on the same page with council. Our intention is to encumber that full one point two five million dollars and spend it before we spend any bond dollars. And I just wanted to get consensus today that that is the correct path to take. Great, thank you. Next project's the Glendale Adult Center. The initial request was for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix entryway structural issues. The glazing was, the steel around the glazing at the entryway was warping. So staff recruited an architect and an engineer to come in and help us to figure out what was going on. And what they figured out was that the way the structural steel had been put together didn't allow for any expansion and contraction, and so instead of moving very slightly, it was flexing, and it was kind of warping the, the framing around the glass. We can, so part, phase one was to remove the glazing, repair the steel, put the glazing back, get it ready for the opening of the Glendale Adult Center in June. That is underway right now. That's a picture from a couple of weeks ago. You can see the construction going on. The second phase of this is, we had the engineer and the architect take a look at, does this exist throughout the rest of the facility? And it did. So what we'd like to do is to bring a contractor on, around the perimeter of the facility, make openings around the perimeter of the facility, repair the steel, put the brick back the way it was, and then bring somebody in to the interior of the facility. When the steel was flexing, instead of moving the way it should have been, we got some cracking in the tile and the drywall throughout the facility. So what we're asking is three hundred and ten thousand dollars. This will not affect the opening of the adult center, but the total time of work will be about forty-five days, once we give them the notice of proceed. We're asking to move this funding from contingency. This is one of several projects. We're going to be asking for contingency funding. If you'd like to hold off on consensus for moving any funds from contingency, I have a slide at the end, and we can discuss all the contingency items at the end. Oh, you're good? Okay. Thank you, sir. The next project is Rose Lane Pool. We, as a reminder, this project was, commitment was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The first of these commitments, projects, were to replaster the pool itself. If you recall, this was the pool that had the leak in it over last summer, so we had to drill several holes in it, fill underneath with cement. several holes in it, fill underneath with cement. So we were able to line up a contract through our public procurement process to get the pools replastered. We are also... Council has also awarded contracts to repair the slides and play fixtures. That's to fix the fiberglass, repaint. That's to fix the... There's additional contracts to fix and paint the fencing and to replace the shade structures. All of that is on course to be completed by the end of the month, so the pool can open up, I believe, June 8. We're still working through some other issues. We want to replace the chlorine delivery system at Rose Lane Pool. There's been some environmental issues that are taking us a little longer than we want, but we have a rough estimate of cost. And then, as with frac, we're going through replacing other aquatics upgrades. It's pumps, valves throughout the entire facility. So if we look at the accounting of the project, all those projects, I told you that we've already kind of... Those components that we've already scheduled to do work on, they total about $410,000. And then we've got another $340,000 of needed repairs at the pool. That's a $300,000 deficit. So what we're asking for is to move $300,000 from contingency to Rose Lane Pool to allow us to get as much as we can done before the opening. It likely will not all be done before the opening. Again, that chlorine delivery system will not be online. But everything else, we can get going before the pool reopens. Are there any questions? Do we have your consensus to...? Thank you. Next project is the park restrooms. Commitment was $1.2 million at three sites, Bonzel, O'Neil, and Thunderbird Paseo. And when I spoke to you in February, I'd mentioned that there were a couple of programming issues. We wanted to make sure we had an appropriate design. We want this to be a template for our exterior restrooms going forward. And then we had an location issue at Bonzel. It was... Where it was located at was not good for the sanitary sewer line. So we've been working towards that with the goal all along to get these restrooms replaced by December 2021. We do have a design now. You can kind of see in that top right is the layout that we're going to be going with. I just want to highlight a couple of things in there. We have two. We're calling them family assist. That's the two restrooms in the middle. If you're like me and you have a young son and a young daughter, and you take them to the park by yourself, it really helps to have a unisex restroom to take them to without being kind of weirded out. And then we've got the two other single assists. So there'd be four unisex restrooms there, and then an area in back for maintenance and storage. The plan would be to demo the existing restrooms, install them all at the same location except for Bonzel. We're going to move Bonzel about 50 feet closer to, is it Bethanyham Road, right next to the parking lot. And again, that will help with the sanitary sewer line.
I have a question for you. The photo that you have here, is that supposed to be representation of the units?
Yes, and it's a representation. So it's not the exact layout. You can tell that. We wanted to use that photo so you can see the coloring that we're going to be using here. So you've got that darker brown at the bottom of the split block, the more siding in between, and then a gray kind of roof at the top. It's all cementuus-based, so it's baked in with the paint. But by using the same color consistently throughout our parks, we don't have to maintain different types of paint if we need to do graffiti repair.
Okay, so where I was going with my question, you would not have units back-to-back the way these are in the picture?
So the interesting thing is the way that this unit comes in, it's built in a factory, and it's going to come in in two pieces. And that's the other interesting thing about the photo. What they do is they set them down, and then they push them together and clip them together. And then they come and install all the plumbing.
Okay, so that's where I was going, because if you leave a space in there, we're just asking for problems.
Yeah. No, there won't be a space there. It's just... It's a neat photo to show you kind of how they arrive on the site. I could also attest that we're not going to leave just dirt all the way around it. There's going to be landscaping and lighting and, you know, a walkway going to it. This is just to give you an idea of what the buildings look like.
All right. Well, I found out what I needed.
Thank you, Mayor. So they're modular? Is that...?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have a question, and I've talked to Mr. Burke about this before, and I think Mr. St. John a few times. What are we going to do about security? Because I understand the reason to provide restrooms in parks, but we end up with lots of vandalism. Could present, you know, dangerous situations for other park patrons. There's, you know, drug use, other things happening inside these restrooms. I know some of them, the ones that are farthest away in Thunderbird Park have been closed for years because of the activities that took place in those restrooms. So are we going to connect these to the real-time crime center? Or are we going to do something to make sure that we do what we can, any way to prevent vandalism and to present some semblance of safety and security for the people who use them?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Burke again.
You could take it, James. Mayor, council, because of the design change of these buildings, they're individual unisex bathrooms. We think they're going to have less of a problem than what you're describing when you go into a current restroom, and you have a series of stalls and a series of sinks, and there's much more space involved. And it's an individual lockable door. And the way we're placing them all, and the mayor, your question was, there won't be doors around all four sides. It'll be one face. And we're trying to arrange them all so it faces either the street or the park parking lot. So they're very visible to PD patrols, park rangers, or any staff or any other users. So when you go to them, you'll see that the door is either closed or unlocked. And then when you open it, you'll see the whole room, and you can either decide to go in or not go in. We think they're going to be a lot safer. Individually, depending on the park location, we may be able to coordinate them with cameras in the future, but just from that exterior view of what's going on in the whole park. And I think that's a later phase than what's currently being looked at.
Turn that off. So at least with this phase of it, they're basically just going to be... And just because there's one person use doesn't mean somebody... There's still going to be a security problem with some unwanted person lurking in a restroom, waiting for somebody else to come in. I mean, it doesn't mean that it's... You know, I understand that, you know, there's no such thing as complete safety everywhere. But we've had a lot of experience with problems with restrooms in parks in Glendale. So I don't know whether we post, you know, we post that these restrooms are under surveillance or something, you know, whether there are actual camera surveillance or whatever, but I don't know. I mean, I've been doing a little bit of research on things that they do in other places in the country just to let people know that they can say under surveillance by the police department, and that could be just literally patrol. But something to discourage people from damaging and doing the things that we've, you know, had happen over and over and over again in public restrooms.
Mayor and council, we'll certainly work with Rick St. John's and the police chief and look at what the best practices are and implement what recommendations to make them safer.
Okay. I don't want anybody to misunderstand. I'm glad we're doing it. I just don't want to end up, you know, constantly having to go in and make repairs and/or close them down because we have problems. I understand it's a good thing for the community. It's just not, you know, we've been down this road before. So, thank you.
Thank you. I share Councilmember Tomachoff's concerns about safety and security. One of the reasons we closed down Bonzel was not just vandalism, but because people were using those bathrooms to shoot up and do other things. There's got to be a way, other than the way we've been doing it previously. If we continue to do it the way to provide security the way we did previously, then we're throwing money away, because these will be vandalized in a short period of time. So I would like you to work with Mr. St. John and come up with a better system of protecting these restrooms, especially at Bonzel Park, because I think that this has been a major issue, especially at Bonzel Park. Secondly, when I first saw the photograph of these restrooms, my first thought was they would be perfect in Tonto National Forest. I don't know if it's the color scheme that turns me off or what, but are those going to be the colors that... Yellowish and brown are the colors of these restrooms?
Mayor, members of council, the buildings are all concrete, and the lower half is to reflect or look like split-faced block, which is a block material that is hard to graffiti.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that, but this yellow we're using? Say, I don't care if it's goldenrod, is that the color scheme?
That is the color we're proposing. So with your guidance, we could certainly look at the color. For the location of Bonzel, I just wanted to point out that on the north side, especially, that current restroom is in... Up against the racquetball courts, right next to the roller blade facility. It's in that narrow space, very undesirable. We're going to demo that building completely, pull it out the 50 feet James mentioned, and put it right next to the parking lot, right by the children's playground area. So it'll be much more visible. We anticipate that will improve the situation.
Okay. The color scheme is yaki. Thank you. That's my professional opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The average cost on the slide is $300,000. Is that per park? Four restrooms for that price?
Yes, so that includes the installation. Now, when we initially asked for the $1.2 million, there was a pretty sizable contingency in there for Bonzel. Again, that was the... It had the sanitary sewer line that was flat, and we overestimated what it would take. The location that we were able to find dramatically cut that cost down. So overall, lowered the average cost down to about $300,000 at each location.
Okay. How many other parks do we have restrooms in that could perhaps be looked at in an additional phase? Do you know offhand?
I believe it's 17 in the total system.
Thank you. And then a minor, but I'm sure very important detail to some people. In the schematic, I don't see changing tables that I can distinguish. Will they... Will at least the two larger ones have changing tables?
I believe so, sir. It's just hard to see on the small schematic.
The answer is yes, sir.
They will. Okay, thank you.
So with that, the next thing is, at an average cost of $300,000 each, what the initial commitment that council gave, staff went back and looked at our priority list of restrooms needing a replacement. And the next one on the list was Rose Lane Park. So we'd like to add Rose Lane Park to this project as a fourth park getting a replacement restroom. Do we have your consensus to do so? Thank you. Next project is the security cameras. Mr. St. John presented this in October. He had a $250,000 initial commitment to bring several locations in the real-time crime center and to add cameras at other locations. A couple of things have changed since then. The CIP process evolved, as you are well aware, and the City Hall project got accelerated. He also approved a contract on April 13 for the cameras. With those two things in mind, staff are requesting to modify this project to be the seven locations only. So that's the libraries, skate park, and the airport. We also have an updated cost. When we looked at pricing in the fall, that was for the cameras, but it wasn't necessarily for the fiber. So that's what's driving a lot of this cost right now. So the updated cost is at $586,000. We'd request to move the funding from contingency into this project to fund it.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Can you walk back through which two locations were dropped?
All right, that was City Hall and the jail.
Okay. So the skate park is still included?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
And the libraries. And those... It's not that the work at City Hall and the jail won't happen. It's just with the remodels that are planned for those facilities, it makes more sense to incorporate the security cameras in with those remodels. Do we have contingency to move forward? Thank you. The last of the projects that were presented to council was the Murphy Park City Hall campus. At the February meeting, this project was complete. We were just waiting on final accounting. We have about 7,000 left over, so we'll be asking to just move that money back into contingency for other projects as needed. And we... This is the start of the three council-directed projects. First of these was to take a look at the Glendale Adult Center. The second floor is an open shell area. So we did invite a consultant then to take a look at, see what we could do for possible swing space for staff. They came up with a couple of options. I'm showing one here, but this is just a possibility of what could happen. This is no way a commitment on what we can do. But it does bring out a couple of neat things. One, you have... There's a couple of things that restrict what we can do. There's that curved, obviously, the staircase at the entryway. And at the top of the image, there is a restriction. That's where the plumbing comes in. So that's where we would show the break rooms and the restrooms to be. And on the right side, there is the mechanic room. That's already built out. So it's the rest of the space we could do something with. On this one concept, we believe we could fit upwards of 75 to 80 people in there with several conference rooms and other needs. However, at this point, if we're looking at using this as swing space for City Hall, staff is requesting a little bit more time to figure out how that whole programming is going to work. And then we can present some options to council about how we actually get from moving people out of City Hall and keeping the city operational while City Hall is being under construction. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it is good to see what this could look like, and there were other options as well. So, you know, my concern is, so do we need it? And if so, is it... Do we have any use for it other than a swing space for City Hall? Is this the best to do such a temporary... You know, this is going to take some investment to build out. And then what do we do with it after everybody's backsettled into their spaces at City Hall? How do we convert this into public space, more public use, or whatever we'd be looking to do with it?
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, Councilmember Turner, that's exactly why we're asking for a little bit more time. We need to figure out both with the City Hall programming how that's going to work. And so we just need a little bit more time. We know this is in our backpocket. We have a possible use for it. We also know that the Glendale Adult Center, they are able to use that space in the future, so we have to be considerate of that.
Yeah, I'd be curious as to how we might use it in the future, either expanding adult center programming or opening up to a combined city-community-type space. We've talked about that as a, you know, service center or a place to house, help other nonprofits, you know, house and co-locate, different things like that. So I'd like to have a sense of, you know, once it's not... Once we don't need it as temporary space anymore, where would we go with it and build in that... Build and design in that direction? Thank you.
Is it okay to give him some more time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second project that was requested by staff is the painting at Suara Ranch Entryway. In October... Or, sorry, initially in November, the request was for $57,000, and that was to paint along 59th Avenue and then the Mountain View alignment. When we came back in February, Mr. Friedline asked for some head nodding to increase that $75,000 to do the rest of the work. That is in progress right now. 59th Avenue, I believe, is complete, and they're working on the Mountain View alignment right now. That portion should be completed in April. We did have a little bit of difficulty with the vendor, small vendor, trying to get them under contract, so the rest of the work should be complete in May. The last of the three council-directed items was for the Business Support Services Manager. When staff presented this initially, they listed $151,000 as a cost of the salary plus a remodel of an office space. Person started in January, so we don't need that full funding. We're asking to move the $65,000 back in a project contingency for all these other projects. And on that note, we have a slide on contingency. So when Mr. Friedline, Mr. Phelps, presented contingency to you in April... Or, sorry, in October, they asked for 10% of everything that wasn't pavement management. That was $1,459,797 to be held back as contingency. Today, I'm making several recommendations. The first of these would be that $18,000 for Suara Ranch painting. That's just Dottie Myers and Crossy Mities. We didn't say at the last meeting where that was supposed to be coming from, so we'd like to take that from contingency. Then we have the $310,000. It's $300,000 to repair the structural issues at Glendale Adult Center, and then $10,000 to repair the interior. to repair the interior. We have an additional ask for $336,000 for security cameras and $300,000 from Rose Lane Pool. At the same time, we feel we can move $7,000 back from Murphy Park Painting and return an additional $65,000 change from the Economic Development Supports, Business Support Services Program Manager, which should leave these projects with a contingency budget of $568,335,000. Do you have your consensus with all these items? Thank you. With that, are there any additional questions that I can answer for you today? Oh, great, thank you. I think our intent is to return in August, continue providing updates. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on a quick question. State law requires at least one changing station in restrooms, and so we will, one of the pods, in each of the pods will have a changing station. That's required by state law.
Council item of special interest, general obligation bond election.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report is our Budget and Finance Director, Lisette Camacho.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This presentation is a council item of special interest on general obligation bond elections requested by Councilmember Tomachoff. General obligation bonds, or GO bonds, must be authorized by voters. They are paid for using secondary property tax. Fiscal year '22 is the eighth year the City Council has kept the secondary property tax levy. A flat levy means that the revenue generated from the property tax remains about the same and only grows by the amount of new construction in Glendale. GO bonds are subject to debt limits, so the constitutional limits. The city's GO bond may not exceed 20% of the net assessed full cash value for combined water, sewer, public safety, streets, transportation, open space, and parks, and 6% for general municipal purpose, which includes libraries, general government facilities, and economic development. The next few slides are historical information on the 2007 bond election. The 2007 bond election was a special election that was held on May 15, 2007. There were five propositions totaling $270 million, about $103 million for public safety, $79 million for streets and parking, about $52 million for economic development, $21 million for flood control, $16 million for parks and recreation. All the propositions except for economic development passed. It's also important to note that since the special election on May of 2007, there have been changes in the GO bond election state statute. Elections must now be held on the first Tuesday following the first Monday of November. The 2007 Bond Committee was established in May 2006 by an ordinance. There were a total of 70 appointed members, 10 mayoral appointees, and 10 appointees from each council member for each district. There was a chair for the overall committee. The appointed members then broke out into five subcommittees for each proposition. Each subcommittee had 12 members, and each subcommittee also had a chair. The Bond Committee in 2007 held 12 committee meetings. So the meetings were held in a four-month timeframe from June 2006 through September 2006. City staff reviewed the 10-year CIP with the committee members, and the bond attorney also presented information on GO bonds. The committee and subcommittees made recommendations for council consideration to add or remove projects and to increase the requested authorization for the bond election. We could not find any information on the public outreach meetings that were held back in 2007. The next few slides are samples of the bond election materials. This one is a one-pager. It has the five voter authorization requested and then also the ballot language. The next two slides are mailers. This is the front page, and the next slide is the back page. And then these are, again, like postcards that were mailed to the voters. The next few slides will cover changes in the GO bond election state law since the 2007 election. In 2009, the estimated tax impact added language that the bonds will result in a property tax increase, and then in 2011, added agricultural or vacant properties from the estimated tax impact calculation, and also reduced the property value for the calculation of the tax impact to commercial properties from 2.5 million to 1 million. And in 2013, the language for the prohibition and the use of city resources was expanded. And in 2015, the prohibition and the use of city resources was amended to include city-focused or town-focused promotional expenditures. This slide illustrates the five authorization that would be needed based on the 10-year CIP. So for streets, with the 10-year CIP, additional voter authorization of $123 million is needed, and that would be needed beginning in fiscal year '23. For parks, $87 million. For the library, about $7 million. For flood control, also about $7 million, and the same for landfill, about $7 million. The year needed for these authorizations varies by voter authorization. As we develop the fiscal year '23 draft capital improvement plan, we will be working with departments to refine their cost estimates because we're getting feedback that construction costs at this time are increasing. So assuming an election in November 2022, this is a draft bond election timeline. The Bond Committee would be formed in August of 2021, and committee members will be appointed in September. Committee meetings will be held from October 2021 through March 2022. The city would, is required to notify the county of the bond election on April, public outreach from April to August of '22, and we would be providing City Council updates on the bond election on a monthly basis. A slide on the Bond Committee. The role of the committee is to review financial information, the city's bonding capacity, and assess the need for additional voter authorization. They are also tasked to recommend a ballot language for council consideration. And as far as the composition of the committee, what we have here is the committee members are recommended to be like a community influencers. They should know how the election process works, and some examples of someone who's involved in the community are HOA presidents, business leaders, members of the Chamber of Commerce, and so on. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and we'll open it up for City Council questions and feedback.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, ladies. I just felt like the historical information would be valuable to us in moving forward. Based on, I don't know, was Councilmember Clark, were you on the council when those bonds ran? Do you remember? That our Bond Committee probably wasn't diverse enough, large enough of a group, and one of the questions that I asked in my council item of special interest in the scoping was, how much input was the Bond Committee given? Were they allowed to bring forward projects and ideas that they had? And that's not here, but was it basically like a presentation, this is what we need? Or were there, was it sort of a give and take of things that the, because I think that's critical to know how that was done in 2007?
Mayor, members of the council, based on the information that we saw, the Bond Committee reviewed the 10-year CIP, and based on the projects within the 10-year CIP, they were able to add or, you know, change the amount recommended for City Council to consider for the bond election.
Okay. You know, based on this timeline draft, we're going to need to be getting going on this if we're going to be forming a committee or have the form, committee formed by August 2021. So, I mean, I'm open to discussion. I don't know whether 10 is the right number per person. I know it's, you know, participation is especially, you know, I mean, people are busy. You may not get everybody to attend every meeting, so I think more than one person from each district is probably critical. I don't, but I don't know whether it's, you know, five each. I don't know what the number is. And then also, I'd like to know, who would be the one that would make a recommendation whether we, I mean, obviously, based on the, on the spreadsheet here, streets and parks are primary concern because we're only funded through fiscal year 2022. So whether we split that up, I don't know, I don't know exactly what the right way to do this is, whether we run to a bond election in 2022 and then another one in 2024 and split it up? I don't know whether that's something the Bond Committee decides, they make a recommendation. How does that work? Or is there a no right way and no wrong way to do it?
Mayor, members of the council, those are really decisions of the council. So you can, you can form, you know, we're suggesting, I guess, that you would form the Bond Committee and give them some direction to look at only a '22 election. They may have a recommendation back to you that they want to look further. Those are the kinds of things that we're talking about that a typical Bond Committee does. They'll make a recommendation to try to go, say, for five years or only for the next four years or the two years because that, you can do another election. Those are all discussions that were held, in fact, at the Bond Committee meetings this round as well, and ultimately, then, the Bond Committee makes a recommendation to you, but you are the body that refers that language for the ballot, and so it's ultimately up to you how far you want to go, how, if you want to assume you're going to have one election or two elections. Those are all decisions made by the council.
Okay, Mayor, I do have one other thing. Back to the, in 2009, was it? It was, I think, the very first amendment to where now they're, you're required to have the verbiage, the issuance of these bonds will result in a property tax increase sufficient to pay the annual debt service on bonds, and I'm sure probably we'd have to go to our Bond Council and find out, but could we also include the language on there that the council has adopted a resolution and that they, their, the secondary property tax could not be increased without a public process because of the resolution? It would have to be a new resolution by, adopted by another council. This council has committed to not raising secondary property tax, so I'm just wondering if that was something that we could provide a little more assurance actually on the ballot to voters. I'm not sure, but I think that's critical for us to know if we can or can't do that.
Mayor, members of the council, I think I defer to Mr. Bailey on that question.
Mayor and council, we'll speak to our outside council. The challenge becomes is that you are restricting the legislative power of a future council in that regard, and that can become difficult, but we'll take a look at that and we'll get back to you.
Mayor, how would we be restricting the, we would say that it, not saying that it can't be done, but it certainly couldn't be done without a public process. If the, if a future council adopted another resolution overriding the existing resolution, that would have to be done in a public meeting. So obviously, we can't guarantee what any future council's going to do on any decision, but we're saying that this council has at least protected the public as much as we can by adopting a resolution, and that any changes to that would have to literally be done with public notice and a public meeting and that sort of thing. So not that they can't do it, but that there would be notice and a public process to change it.
Mayor and council, and where it would have to be public, it would have to be noticed just to comply with the open meeting law. It's, I guess it's the devil's in the details. What is the process and what are the conditions of the process, and how are you going to condition a future council? And so I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying we need to look a little more into it, and we'll get back to you.
Okay. I just feel like, I mean, I know other bonds have passed since that language has been included, and so we can't say, we can't point to this and say this is why our bonds didn't pass because other bonds have passed with that language on them. So I just, I guess we're going to have to do a better job of telling the story, even if we can't put something on the ballot that explains it a little further to the residents. But I think we need to, you know, I don't know what the right number is of people on the Bond Committee, but I think we at least need to start moving forward with that now because it's already Saturday, it's May. So we're, you know, we're getting, we're going to need to be, starting to work towards thinking through who we're going to put, how many people do we need, and then, I guess, bring those names to an August meeting and approve them for, to seat a Bond Committee. So does anybody have any ideas on how many we should have? I'm not sure what the right number is.
Mr. Phelps?
I'll add some context to this while you guys are discussing it. Having been an elected official that went through a major bond issue twice, because the first one failed, second one passed, I would start off by saying is that, you know, what you need to do is to build champions outside of this organization in the community that are willing to champion the cause. You have to, which means we have to be able to explain what our need is and why there's a need to go out and to ask the voters to support this. And the first time, when I was an elected official, we were going to build a new police station, we totally bypassed. We are, we knew internally what the need was, so we felt since we knew what the need was, the voters would understand that, and it went down, you know, pretty classic failure. The second time, we engaged all of our neighborhood councils. We had a Bond Committee that was probably in excess of 100 people on the committee, and each of the neighborhood councils actually had champions and worked towards a collective good of educating the public and creating the consensus. So what I would say is, I think it starts with demonstrating what the need is and communicating that to the community, and then looking to see how many people within the community are willing to invest time and energy into going out and raising it. That's your, in my opinion, just from my own experience, your best opportunity for doing that. I think, so I wouldn't go right to let's form a committee and who should be on that committee. I would start with strategizing on how you can identify the range of different people that are influencers, as Lisette mentioned in her presentation. And that's why, you know, people who are on HOA boards, people who are involved in their Rotary Club or in Kiwanis or in different organizations become really critical because they influence a lot of other people. So I think I would start with trying to come up collectively. The seven members of this council know this community better than probably any other seven people in the city. I would start identifying those people that you would like to sit down, explain what the need is, and see if you could engage them into, into working on a campaign that would communicate back to the public. I do believe you're correct, Councilmember Tomachoff. I think I would start on this sooner rather than later and give yourself as much time to build your case, both within the media and within the neighborhoods, within the community, within the business community, and I think the rest of it will fall into place relatively easily. When we did that the second time, we went from a failure of, we had to have 60% to pass the bond. We went from a 48% failure the first time around to a 60, almost 62% for the second time around, but we, by engaging with our community, we changed the scope of the project a little bit. We added some substations in and by creating that need, and it was a huge success. And I think we can replicate the same thing here, but again, I would really encourage you to, we need to get our community really rallied around this issue.
Mr. Phelps, I agree with everything you said, but I think the one thing that you left out is, we have, we have to be 100% behind us ourselves. We've got to be totally convinced what we want, that we're doing it in unison together, so we all go out with the same exact message to everybody we talk with, that it's got to be exact message from everybody.
Mayor, members of council, I would agree. I guess I was maybe assuming you guys would be there, but I would also say, one other key thing, and looking back and reflecting on our last effort, is, again, when we talked about building a new police station, we didn't have much more than a concept. The second time we went out, we actually had visual concepts of what the police station would look like, and we had visuals of what the substations would look like, because we learned from the community, they wanted some substations in addition to one new central headquarters. And so we didn't, weren't able to do that, and so I think along this process, you can identify those kind of key projects that you can then, you know, show the community what that would do back in their neighborhood. you can then, you know, show the community what that would do back in, in their neighborhood. And so you need to have visuals if you're going to build new aquatic centers or athletic fields or, you know, repairing or expanding roadway systems. You, you need to be able to show them. You can't just tell them a list of, we're going to, we're going to redo 59th between this street and that street. I think you really want to get more project detail put in place.
I would, I would hope that we would have a workshop before we go, go dark in, in July, just on this very thing. So we're all on the same page. We're all, we're all in the same line. We're all pulling in the same direction.
Mayor.
I see her. She don't think I've seen her, but I actually seen her.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think all of the suggestions between Councilmember Tomachoff and the city manager are well put and well placed and well considered. The elephant in the room is this 2009 amendment. It says, will result in a property tax increase. That's like waving a red flag in front of a bull. People hate that. So we, here's my question, which I would like staff to do some research on. Since 2009, there have been other valley cities that have had successful bond issues passed. I would like us to be talking to them to find out what strategies they used that made them successful. It can do nothing but give us more information that will help us to be more successful. So I would ask that you, you research that issue and, and report back to council what other cities and towns have done that have made them successful in passing their bond issues since 2009 in this horrendous language that is now incorporated in every bond election. I, I think the city manager's suggestion of the more people, the better is an excellent one. And I don't think we have to limit it to 10 per council member. Maybe it's a dozen or 15. Because I think that is the key. The more people that we get on board that understand this and can explain it to the rest of the community, the better off it is to be successful about this. I'm not sure that splitting it up into two separate elections serves us well. I think it will be difficult enough and a steep road to go to just do one election. So I, I think we're better off concentrating on preparing for one election and making a better public case of the need and, and why we feel that this is necessary at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Officer turning it on. Thank you. So I guess based on Mr. Phelps's suggestion too, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Glendale resident. It could be perhaps the CEO of the chamber and people like that that are also advocates for the community and people in the business community who maybe aren't Glendale residents. So our scope probably of who, who would be the right people to be on the committee, possibly people from Public Safety and other, other things like that, that we're thinking in terms of not necessarily has to be just HOA people and residents, but a pretty big pool of people who are active in our community, but not necessarily residents. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, that concludes our presentation.
Presentation regarding front yard parking regulations.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report will be Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. We're here today to talk in a series of conversations that we hope to have with council about revisions to the zoning ordinance, revisions to the general code as recommended by the Code Review Committee and the consultants that are working with the Code Review Committee. As I said, this is the first of what we hope to be several conversations. In today's conversation, we're simply tackling where people can park in the, at the front of their house. So issues such as RV parking, storage of vehicles, things of that nature will come in following conversations. I want to set the table a little bit today and explain why we've taken the direction that we've taken. I will be asking for several points of consensus from council to move forward and that'll be clearly articulated in the slide presentation. But before we go there, there was an issue of front yard parking that came up many years ago from some constituents and neighborhoods that were dissatisfied with the way people were parking in front of their homes, creating blight issues. Those concerns rose to director levels and eventually city management level and council got involved and created a code review committee to take a look at several aspects of the zoning ordinance and the general code and how they were being enforced. The conversations that we'll have over the next couple of months in workshops are a result of that work that's been done by the consultants, the code review committee. And then once that work is done through the code review committee, it's then handed off to the city attorney's office for review. So Mr. Bailey, Mr. Bowling, Mr. Meta from Development Services and I have sat, we've gone through all the recommendations. And so what you'll see today is a hybrid of all those recommendations ultimately enabling us to better enforce the code to control some of the blight issues and safety concerns that are occurring in our communities. And there are a couple of different ways to talk about this. And what I'd like to do is, is talk about the difference between the zoning ordinance and the general code and some case law that tells us there's a difference. But before we dive into the presentation, I am going to be seeking council consensus today on some amendments to chapter 24 of the city code as it relates to front yard parking. In today's code, parking exists in chapter 24, 25, parts of it in chapter 26. We have, it's really all over the place. And so what we feel as staff in the city attorney's office is that we could make the code a lot simpler for our community by making chapter 24 all about transportation and parking and anything vehicle related. Chapter 25 is all about nuisances and chapter 26 is really the criminal code. Criminal aspects of our code that are, that are meant to be criminal in nature from the onset, whereas parking and nuisances can be civil in the beginning and rise to a criminal prosecution at some point if you're not getting the compliance that you need. But what we'd like to do is put everything that's transportation and vehicle related into chapter 24. That'll be a future conversation. But these amendments that we're seeking today will be a part of chapter 24. And the reason why we're doing this, there's a difference between the zoning ordinance and the general code. The zoning ordinance allows for legal nonconforming, and this is not a Glendale issue. This is a statewide issue. This is Arizona state law that, that allows for people who had been using land or had developed land in such a way that new rewrites to the zoning ordinance don't conform, they are grandfathered in under legal nonconforming. And if the city takes action against that land, the land owner or user of that property could turn around and say there was diminished value because of this, of the city's new ordinance or new enforcement, and the city could be liable for whatever that diminished property value is. And we know that because there was a case that came forward. But to talk more about, and I'll talk about that in a second, but more about the zoning ordinance, it allows for interpretation by the planning administrator. So as your staff changes over time, I think the last rewrite for the zoning ordinance was done in 1993. I couldn't begin to tell you how many planning administrators we've had since 1993. My guess is we've had quite a few. And every planning administrator that comes in has the ability to interpret portions of the zoning ordinance based on the needs and, and problems that are presented in that time period. But what that does is it, is it creates an enforcement strategy that the city then sort of gets locked into. And what I mean by that is if the planning administrators of years past said that you can do these certain things under the zoning ordinance and their interpretation, and then the city turns around 10 years, 15 years later and says, nope, we want to stop that. We want to change it. We want to amend the interpretation, start enforcing differently. Those people who are impacted could raise that grandfathering or legal nonconforming issue to the courts and the city could be held accountable for any diminished property value. So that's the problem with having a rotating position. And I say rotating, you hope to hire a planning administrator that stays with you for 30 years, but we know that that's not always the case. And so you have a rotating position and somebody that can reinterpret other interpretations or make changes along the way. It allows for administrative relief and appeals are heard through the Board of Adjustments. Administrative relief comes from the planning administrator as well. The, the city code, on the other hand, it allows for strict enforcement as the code is written. It doesn't allow for legal nonconforming. Legal nonconforming is not part of the general city code. It is part of the zoning ordinance. It doesn't allow for relief except when there's an ADA issue and there's a reasonable accommodation that comes up. I've been working with Mr. Bowling, Code Division now for about 18 months, and we've had one in 18 months where there was an ADA compliance issue that we had to adhere to. And it was a fairly minor adjustment that we needed to make, but those do come up. And then interpretations, clarifications come from the courts as cases are heard and adjudicated. So as cases are processed through the court system, judges or in, at times juries are making decisions about the application of our code, and that may impact future enforcement. But that's really where it belongs. It belongs in the courts. It doesn't belong with a single individual that, that rotates through a position. And the case that I'm talking about, where all this comes from, or at least where my knowledge of it comes from, is David Novak versus the town of Fountain Hills. So the town of Fountain Hills amended their general code, and we'll talk more in this presentation about how they amended it, but essentially they amended the number of vehicles that you could have parked in front of your house based on square footage of livable space of the home. Fountain Hills enforced on Mr. Novak because he had more vehicles than was allowed under the new code. He filed lawsuit claiming that he should be grandfathered in as legal nonconforming use. And the court ruled that grandfathered rights or legal nonconforming does not apply to the general code. Interestingly enough, they did also state that if Fountain Hills had made these changes in their zoning ordinance, Mr. Novak would have won because legal nonconforming and grandfathered rights do exist in the zoning ordinance. So the recommendation, the primary recommendation from Mr. Bailey's office staff is that the changes that we make, if we want to have an impact in our community and the blight issues that are created by the way people are using their properties, those changes need to be made in the general code so that we can go out and we can immediately begin to enforce the code as it's written and we're not concerned with legal nonconforming or grandfathered rights. And there will be some one offs that we need to talk about. So in today's discussion, we plan on covering allowable parking area. And there's two distinctions based on lot size, greater or less than 12,000 square foot lot sizes. We're going to talk a little bit about maneuvering areas, approved surfaces, dealing with exceptions, and then we'll, we'll finish with the Fountain Hills code and some recommendations from staff on what we might adopt if this council would approve that would be beneficial to our communities here in Glendale. So the first, lots less than 12,000 square feet, I will say this language exists in the zoning ordinance today. This isn't new language. What we're saying is this language needs to be in the city code as opposed to the zoning ordinance so it can be more strictly enforced. And it simply says that on, on lots less than 12,000 square feet, you can have 30 feet of contiguous driveway. So that's a two car garage plus an extra 10 feet typically to the proper side of the residence. So that would be not in front of the living space, but on the access to the rear yard side. You could extend by an additional 10 feet and create that third parking stall. And as long as it was an approved surface, you could park on that. You can also put maneuvering areas and other improved surfaces in so long as you don't exceed 50% of the total front yard. On lots greater than 12,000 square feet, the max width grows to 40, but the total percentage of the front yard reduces to 40% because there's, there's more front yard to work with and you don't need 50% typically on lots that are greater than 12,000 square feet. And again, this exists in the code today. It is enforced in large part by Code Compliance Division, but there are a lot of legal nonconforming issues in parts of the community that are older, built in the 50s and 60s. And we run into a lot of concerns when it, when it comes to trying to get residents to comply with this because of that legal nonconforming.
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. St. John. There's, you and I had a couple of conversations, and the word circular driveways is not in the first bullet, nor is it in the second bullet. You can explain to me why it's not, but currently as it stands, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if you, it's not illegal to put a circular driveway in the yard, you just can't park on it, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, there are some provisions that I'll, or stipulations that I'll make. Number one, if it is a less than 12,000 square foot lot and they have a two car garage or even a third stall installed on the proper side of the house, so they've got 30 feet of contiguous, they can still install a circular drive for a maneuvering area and, so long as they didn't exceed the 50% of their total front yard.
Correct. So why wouldn't you have the circular driveway in there? Because if, if it does exceed it, then it should be in here, correct?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Aldama, the, the idea with the way it's written here is to cover everything that might exist. And circle drives are one piece of what might exist. Auxiliary drives on the opposite side of the house for access to the rear yard is another component that, that we could include. If we began to include every possible element, then my fear is that the code would get hard to read and hard to understand for people that live in the community. If we simply say that you can have 30 feet of parking space and, and improved surface circular drives, as long as you don't exceed 50% of the total front yard, I think that's easy to enforce. It's easy to interpret and understand if you're a homeowner redeveloping your front yard, let's say, or trying to figure out how to redevelop your front yard. But if there was council consensus to add language about circular drives, we could certainly do that.
Mayor, if I may continue. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. St. John. So yeah, I, I, at this point, I'd like to hear from the council, but what I'm hearing is you're removing the circular drive and putting it somewhere else. So if someone were to have a circular driveway there and it exceeded the 50%, I guess what I'm hearing is it would be allowable? And it can't, it can't be allowable.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Aldama, to your point, it would not be allowable if it exceeded the 50%. That's, that's, that is what I'm saying.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. St. John. So we should, is why I'm asking the council that we add circular drive to this language so that it includes it. Right now, it's not including it.
Got me confused now. So if you included it, it still is not allowed though? Not allowed the way it is now, and if you added it, it's still not allowed?
Mayor, that's correct. If it exceeds the 50% of the total front yard.
I'm not really sure what you'd be accomplishing by doing that.
Thank you, Mayor. I, just the fact that we, we have exempted the word circular drives, we just need to have that in there so that that becomes part of the record, that even the, the circular drive can't exceed it. Right now, I could argue and say, you never said circular drive. It's just making it clearer going forward.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, I understand.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I concur with you. Whether, whether circular drive is mentioned or not, it still can be calculated in that 50% allowable. I don't, a, a drive is a drive whether it's straight or circular. So are you going to then distinguish straight driveways from circular driveways? No. So I think a driveway is a driveway, no matter what its configuration, and is included in the total allowable. I don't think it's necessary to, to mess with this and specify or add the word circular.
Actually, I, I think my, my concern is not so much circular because I can think of homes where they don't have circular driveways. They don't have straight driveways. They have angled driveways. have angled driveways. And to me, the question that I, I'm more concerned about is if they have a circular driveway or an angled driveway or a driveway that's sixty feet wide, would it, would it be allowed, or would they have to go in there and jackhammer and concrete cut and take that out, even if they're not parking on it? That's what I'd like to know.
Mayor, members of the council, if they are in, if they're not in compliance with the code as this council approves and it gets adopted, and we go out and open a case either by complaint or through proactive enforcement, and let's say they're a 7,000 square foot lot where sixty-five percent of their front yard is an improved surface for maneuvering and/or parking, we would work with that homeowner to establish what their actual parking areas are, clearly define those parking areas, and work to redefine what the other areas are intended to be, so that they're incorporated in the general landscape, not necessarily as a maneuvering area or a, an area to park, if that makes sense. But it would have to be case by case.
One second, I'll get to you in a second. So if they have a sidewalk to walk on, is that included?
Mayor, members of the council, sidewalks, things of that nature are not included in the total square footage of the front yard as it's calculated for the percentages. Fifty percent of the landscapable area is typically what we look at.
Okay, so a forty-foot wide sidewalk is okay?
Mayor, I suppose so.
Maneuverable.
I'm just trying to clarify here. Go ahead.
Sorry. Okay, so I'm, I think I'm pretty confused. So our standard is not more than fifty percent, period. It doesn't matter what kind of driveway you have, you just can't have more than fifty percent. Does that include also, now, when you say maneuvering areas, that like RV access and things like that, like to get it through an RV gate? Is that considered driveway or maneuvering area, or it doesn't really matter?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaff, it would be considered a maneuvering area, and so we, you would not be allowed to exceed fifty percent of the total front yard.
Okay, so any improved, and does that include gravel, too, or just, you know?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaff, when we get to the area of what an improved surface is, I'll make that distinction a little clearer. Right now, you can park on gravel. We're asking for clarity to that, because I think what happens is people gravel their entire front yard, and then they park on the side yard or the side of the driveway, not in front of the living space of the house, and it's just a gravel surface, but it's not a distinguishable parked, parking area. It's just gravel, and that gravel might, in some cases, be forty feet wide because of the large lot size. And so we have, we have people that are parking several vehicles along that gravelled area, and what we're saying is you have to have clearly defined parking and maneuvering areas in your front yard. And again, when we get to the approved surfaces slide, I'll talk more about that.
Okay. Mayor, if I could, that's why I was asking, because if you, if you're using, if you've got, your side yard is gravel and you've got it landscaped so that you can get in and out of there with a trailer, is that considered a maneuvering area, or what is that considered?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaff, it would be considered a maneuvering area if they're accessing the backyard with a vehicle, yes.
So there, so Mayor, if I could continue, so it's determined basically by the fact that there's an RV gate there? Is that how you would decide that? Because unless they're using it, you wouldn't know that that's what they're using it for other than that you see an RV gate and you see gravel where there's, you know, clearance to get in and out of there?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaff, we would investigate and determine how that gravelled area was being utilized. I think in some cases, it would be utilized as a maneuvering area to get to the RV gate, in other cases, it's, it's just, they're not using the RV gate for an RV or to access vehicles to the backyard, so it would not be counted against their fifty percent. It would be an approved, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? Yeah, just want to be clear. Mr. St. John, so on the top on the max width, it's a little confused. Is it either/or, or in any case, it'll be the fifty percent? It can never be both, right? It's either/or? Which one are you going to follow, I guess, to?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, it is both. So it's, you can have thirty feet of continuous driveway, or you can have a twenty-foot driveway and then a circular driveway in your yard, provided you don't exceed the maximum fifty percent of total front yard. If the circle drive is connected to the twenty feet of driveway, that connected space couldn't exceed thirty feet.
Okay. That's it? Thank you.
There are a couple of other issues to discuss. Corner lots, for example, typically on a corner lot, you have to determine what the front of the property is, which, which street the property actually faces, and then what is considered the side yard. And when you're dealing with the thirty-foot rule, the side yard, the thirty-foot rule applies to the front of the property, but the side yard can be calculated as part of the landscapable visible area in determining the fifty percent piece. And then irregularly shaped lots, for example, in a cul-de-sac. So cul-de-sacs tend to be very wide on the back, narrow in the front towards the street, and so their front yard looks significantly smaller, if you will, than their backyard, which is usually fairly large. And so we would allow on irregularly shaped lots for them to increase to sixty percent of the total front yard for parking and/or maneuvering.
Mayor? So in a irregularly shaped lot, you know, a pie-shaped type lot you're describing, if they have a double car, carport or garage, that would be about twenty feet, but if they don't have ten feet more, or anything really to speak of, more available to the property line, that doesn't mean they need, they get the right to create a ten-foot parking space in front of the livable area of the house or detached from the carport and driveway, does it?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, no, it would not. They would, however, if the lot and the structure of the house, if there was an RV gate on the other side, they could, they could put an auxiliary maneuvering area to access that RV gate with the twenty-foot, or let's say it's a three-car garage, a thirty-foot driveway plus that auxiliary maneuvering area to access the backyard, they might exceed the fifty percent. And so we're saying, because of the narrow, you know, the way the lot is laid out, that they can encroach sixty percent before they'd be in violation.
Thank you. And Mayor, if I could continue, then, just for clarity, but under no circumstance, the size of, the size or shape of the yard, would that auxiliary driveway or maneuvering area be allowed to be a parking space?
Correct.
Because it is considered front yard.
My apologies. Mayor, Councilmember Turner, correct.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mr. St. John, so before we move on too far, I guess I could ask it at the end, but so we haven't changed, this isn't changing the existing code, it's pretty much the same. So going forward, how are we going to deal with, let's say, all of the calls that come in and you guys open, you all opened cases on and went and perhaps didn't measure? How are you going to handle all those? Are you going to go back to those cases, or are we just starting from fresh and saying, everybody's got a clean slate? We'll start handling the code calls as they come in, and we'll go out and measure those yards. How are we going to handle all that?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, Mr. Bulling and I have talked at length about this. This is going to be a substantial change for several of our communities, and so we would initially begin with those residents that we've received multiple complaints on or even a single complaint, but being complaint-driven in our approach. And then gradually, as the community becomes more educated on these changes, move towards proactive enforcement, we would certainly go back and address properties that had or have been complained about in these regards, in order to bring those residences into compliance.
Mayor, if I may, thank you, Mr. St. John. So what I'm, what I'm listening to is that we've done one of two things. We've either not been enforcing, or we've been enforcing so well that we don't need to go back now, because I'll tell you, there's, just in my district alone, there's tons of homes that were built back in the sixties and circular driveways have been installed that most likely probably exceed the rule here. There's a ton of them, not just one or two, and there's other driveways that, and some yards have their whole yard of concrete and are parking on it. So I'm just concerned on how we're going to deal with that. Again, does everybody get a clean slate after we vote on it, if it passes, and is that what we're doing? I know you explained a little bit, but there's, I'm sure you have a whole ton of them.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Aldama, to your point, we do have a list of properties that we know are, have been complained about, have had issues with proving legal nonconforming or not, and so our hope is that we can go back, open cases on those houses, talk to those residents, explain the code as adopted by council, and begin to work with them on bringing them into compliance under whatever new code the council adopts.
And to follow up, so it sounds like, just going, so going forward, it sounds like we may not have been enforcing the code, kind of got to start fresh for staff as well. Now you're going to go out and literally measure those yards and say, yeah, it's over fifty percent or exceeds thirty, done deal. Okay, thank you.
So on this first piece, as I've, as we've discussed, is there consensus from the council to move this into the general code?
Not unanimous, but it looks like you have.
Mayor? Can I just ask one question? Are these recommendations from the code committee, or where are these coming from?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaff, the code review committee went through, did a ton of work with the consultants, really poured a lot of effort into this. That was handed over to Mr. Bailey in his office to look at from a legal perspective. Mr. Metta, Mr. Bailey and I, Mr. Bulling met on several occasions to talk about what might be best for our community, and these are recommendations that are sort of a hybrid of all those components.
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to be clear. You have a home, Councilmember Aldama said there are several homes that he knows of, that, and all of us know of several homes, that the front yard is way more than fifty percent, there's no doubt in anybody's mind. There's no way they're going to be in compliance with this. You haven't had any complaints on them, but if somebody complains on them once this becomes code, their only option is to go in there and concrete and jackhammer and remove the cement or be in violation. Is that correct?
No. Mayor, that's not correct. What they would need to do is clearly distinguish what their parking or maneuvering areas are, and there are several ways you can accomplish that. Regardless of the current landscape, you just have to establish what those parking or maneuvering areas are, and then live within those established parameters. So if we get a complaint about a resident who says, my entire front yard is concrete, but I've established through markers or through border of some kind where my parking and maneuvering areas are, when we go out and inspect, as long as you're living within those parameters, then you're not in violation. If you're outside those parameters, then we would, then we would begin to issue notices of violation. But it does not mean that they have to jackhammer their entire front yard out.
Right now?
Correct.
Mayor, if I may, it's not, again, it's not illegal to concrete your entire front yard, just can't park on it.
Mayor, correct, yes.
You just can't park on it. And then the next thing, just to be clear, how does this resolve not being able to park in front of the living space or the, or your front door? So if the circular driveway and the existing driveway built with the home conforms, and I can park on that circular driveway, I can still park in front of the door?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, there are several slides later in the presentation that kind of address some of those issues.
I'm good.
The next item that I'd like to discuss with council are approved surfaces. This is language from the consultants that we agree with. Dustproof surface, concrete asphalt, pavers, crushed rocker, aggregate, and they're making the recommendation that it be at least three inches deep. That seems very thick to me, but if council agrees, then it's certainly doable. And then parking and maneuvering areas must be clearly defined. And so one of the bullets that I have in there is if you have a granite or aggregate front yard, the area where you plan to maneuver a vehicle and/or park a vehicle in some cases needs to be a granite or aggregate of a different color. So clearly, with a border, so it clearly distinguishes where your parking maneuvering areas are as opposed to what you've created as far as desert landscape. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the approved surfaces.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
That's to say that would be one way in which you could clearly delineate, but you could also delineate with a border of, you know, railroad ties or a concrete, you know, border material or even a, you know, plastic that's designed for that purpose. You wouldn't necessarily have to have a different color, but that would be an acceptable way. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, are there any unacceptable ways to accentuate the part, like layout paint, or, I mean, you know, would we accept any way to differentiate the gravel, or are there clearly ways you cannot do that?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaff, I think what we would say is it needs to be a permanent decision, and so going out and chalking it, for example, is not permanent. You'd have to do more than just chalk it or paint it. But I haven't given much thought to what some are doing, aren't doing. I think what we're seeing a lot as far as how people are not using improved surfaces the way that we would desire, is they're putting a desert landscape in with no original intention of parking on that desert landscape, and then they're parking on it saying it's an improved surface because it's granite. And in the current code and the way that it's interpreted today, they are correct. And what we're saying is we need to provide a little more clarity and say, you need to distinguish where you're going to park or where you're going to maneuver, and it should look different in some way from your general landscape. And that's either by the borders that you create, or by the color of the aggregate, or whatever else might come into play down the road.
Mayor, if I could, just, I mean, to me, appropriate border seems very open to interpretation. That's just my opinion, though. I don't know whether it needs to be a little more specific, because otherwise, somebody could say, well, this is a border to me, and I find it appropriate, so.
Consensus for language with approved surfaces? So we will need to deal with some exceptions, because in some of our communities, and this is not just the southern end of town, it goes all the way up into the Choya District, there are houses that were constructed and designed that aren't going to meet this language the day the language comes into effect. And so there has to be a process for dealing with that. The recommendation from the city prosecutor, from my office through Mr. Bailey's office and the code official is that on a case-by-case, we bring this to the city prosecutors. City prosecutors review the language of the general code adopted by council versus the zoning ordinance and how the land was constructed in the beginning. And if the prosecutors determine this is more of a zoning ordinance issue than a code issue, then we would make that notation in our records management system, and that case would be closed as a zoning ordinance issue. And I've got some examples from across town. So in this example, the driveway was constructed well after the house was constructed, there was no original driveway with the house, and so the area to park is in front of a livable space. The only other option this homeowner would have would be to park on the street, because there's no other spot to place a driveway. In this example, it's a corner lot where the house clearly faces to the right or left, if you will, and they have an access to an RV gate which cuts through the gutter portion. Very few of these exist, but a couple of them do exist. This is a circle drive that goes into a secondary garage, so by appearance, it seems that the person is parking in front of their front door, but they're actually parking on the driveway that leads to a garage. And there are several examples of that. Here's another example. This is up in the Choya District where they've got garages on either side of this drive that you're seeing, and they're parked on the driveway leading to both of those garages, but on appearance, it looks like they're parking in front of the livable space. but on appearance, it looks like they're parking in front of the livable space. This is a four-car garage with an auxiliary drive to the side. It's constructed as a four-car garage. It's 40 feet, probably 40-plus feet of driveway associated with the house alone, but it is less than 12,000 square feet. So essentially, what we'd be saying is you have a four-car garage, but you can only park on three of the four access points to the garage. And we believe based on construction, that would be unreasonable and very difficult to enforce, and so we would, we would seek the waiver from the prosecutor on this as well. And this is another example of a four-car garage on a smaller lot size where they, you're really not supposed to exceed 30 contiguous feet. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about how we deal with these exceptions.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Those four-car garages, I know, at least in the Choya district, which communities offered that, and those were highly desirable properties. And you said that they will be waived by the prosecutor, which means they'll be, they're going to be cited and have to, or that, or what do you mean? I guess I need to understand what you mean by that.
So Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaf, if we get a complaint that this house, for example, is exceeding 30 feet of contiguous driveway, we will go out, we'll look at the complaint, do an inspection, and if we determine, yep, yep, they're clearly wider than 30 feet, however, it is how the house was constructed in the original design. It was not done by the owner in addition to the original design, then we would take that to the prosecutor's office and have the case closed through the prosecutor's office before it even got to a notice of violation.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mayor?
May I follow up on that really quick? Is that okay, Councilmember?
I'll just, sure.
I may have the floor, Mayor. To follow up on that, what we're looking at is, Mayor and council, is that to the extent that there's something within an HOA that establishes or regulates that parking, and more importantly, to the extent when the home was constructed, if it was sold with the idea that you could park four cars in your driveway, we would not be citing that. So that there are special circumstances, and in some instances, keeping in mind that most residential development is PAD development, the regulation will most likely be different in those areas because, one, they have an HOA, and two, when they were constructed and sold, we permitted them to have driveways such as that, which would accommodate parking for vehicles, like the one in front of you. You could assume there would be four vehicles parked in that driveway because there are four garage, or two garage doors that would park four vehicles. So just wanted to follow up with that. Thank you.
My only question, using that same photo, if they had a 24-foot trailer sitting there that stayed inside of the driveway, did not exceed onto the sidewalk, would that, would that be acceptable?
Mayor, that is a conversation that we'll have in future workshops regards to storage vehicles and operable vehicles, RV parking, boat parking, things of that nature. That's not part of the discussion today. I can answer the question, but.
Well, I know we talked about it at a, at a pass, but I was curious in this case, with, with the driveways, what we're talking about.
As the, Mayor, as the code is written today, if someone parked an RV in front of one of those garages, it did not overhang onto the sidewalk, it would be legally parked.
Mayor, Mr. St. John, can you go back to the very first photo, dealing with the exceptions? Yeah, that photo there. So you explained that that is, I think you said, legal nonconforming? That's, you would incite that?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, in today's zoning ordinance, this, I'm not sure if this is legal nonconforming or not. What I'm saying is if we move this into the general code where legal nonconforming is no longer something that we look at, we might create an exception for this resident simply because there's no, other than parking on the street, there's nothing else they can do because of the design and construction of the home at its origin.
Right, and I do believe that we should have some exceptions that staff has to work with for, for exception of, you realize, and this is in my district, that's why I'm so familiar with it, you realize that that apartment complex, that's the only apartment that has a driveway in front of it. All others that live in that apartment complex have to park in the, in, on the street. So I'm not asking you to take any action, I'm just saying this is one that's, gets real complicated in how you're going to deal with the exceptions because I think that's a fourplex, I believe. All the others park on the street except for this one. For some reason, it might have been, might have been the owner and poured his own driveway and he has that. Anyway, I do believe in exceptions, but just wanted to bring that to your attention. I guess nothing. Thank you.
Mayor? If I may. On slide number 20, which is the second of the four-car garage examples, they, that's in excess of 30 feet, but because it was in original construction, it would be, we wouldn't contest it. But on slide 19, the one right before it, very similar, except they have additionally, they have additional concrete to the left there. And I, my concern, would, would they be able to use that for parking or simply as a driveway to access parking in the back, in the side yard, for instance?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, it would be used as access to the rear yard.
Okay. And for new construction that we may anticipate in the future that could come through with four-car garages requested, how would we handle that?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that would be handled in the zoning ordinance through design review, and then we would enforce based on what was permitted in the design review applications and through that process.
So we're not necessarily outlawing four-car garages in the future. They'll be handled as original construction, and if it fits through, if it complies with everything else, they would have to comply with the not more than 40 or 50 percent of the front yard rule, though, in the future, I would imagine.
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, my, my belief is they would because it also exists in the zoning ordinance, so my belief is that they would have to comply with that.
Thank you.
So we do have consensus with dealing with exceptions in that way? And then the final thought for the day is to limit the number of vehicles allowed to be parked on a driveway or other maneuvering area in front of a house. This is the Fountain Hills case, the Novak versus Fountain Hills that we discussed earlier. Fountain Hills changed their code to say that you could have one vehicle for every 750 square feet of livable space. Recommendation, 750 might be high for our community, we might consider 500 square feet of livable space. So a 2,000-square-foot home could have four cars parked out front, and then doing the math from there, you can determine, and my recommendation would be to roll up. So if you had a 1,400-square-foot home, you wouldn't want to park 2.8 vehicles. What is 0.8 of a vehicle? So we would roll that up and say, okay, 1,400 square feet, you can have three cars in front of your residence. And I'm happy to answer any questions if council would like to discuss.
I do have a question. Motorcycle considered just the same as any other vehicle?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaf, yes.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would definitely like to see the limit diminished to 500 square feet. I just did a quick thing. Our house is 3,000 square feet and it would allow for 3.8 vehicles, which is dumb, because we have five vehicles. So right away, we would be in violation of, of the code. So I think 500 square feet is a much more realistic expectation. Thank you.
Mayor? Thank you. When I read the Fountain Hills case, I was a little bit, you know, confused about this, and, and the more I think about it, the more I think that it, this might actually be counterproductive in our community. Because we're regulating how many they can park on their driveway in front of their garage. So they may have room to park too, too wide and too deep, but they may only have the square footage to allow for three, which means that fourth vehicle can, is, is going to be parked on the street. So what we're, in essence, doing is saying, even though you could legally park on your property and off the street, you have to park on the street. And I think that could be detrimental to our neighborhoods.
I would just hope that they don't have multiple limousines.
I would agree with what has been said by several individuals. I think there is valid concern about those vehicles or those homes that have long driveways that could accommodate more than just two vehicles, which is the typical driveway, and this may cause some sort of problem in those areas. However, at the same time, I agree with the limiting because we have so many problems with excess vehicles parking. And I think it's mostly trying to address circular driveways and those kinds of things. This addresses that problem that has been brought to the council code committee where we have a two-car, maybe a four-car driveway plus a circular, and you look at that, and it's nothing but cars in front of that yard because they park all the way across it. And it may be a 2,000-square-foot house. And so this does attempt to address it. And I don't know if it's possible, but Mr. St. John, I'd like you to maybe look at possibly providing some niches or some exceptions where there are long driveways to allow perhaps a little bit more leeway in that, but at the same time, I think the limiting is going to be a benefit for addressing the issues that this city has been trying to resolve for the past several years.
Mayor? How, how big of a problem is this particular issue here? Not all the other things we talked about, but this issue right here in a grand scheme?
Mayor, members of the council, it is a problem we deal with routinely. I don't have a specific number of instances where we've run into this issue. I can tell you of the list of properties that I alluded to earlier after Councilmember Aldama's inquiry, several of those properties also have this issue where, quite frankly, the front of their, of their house looks like a parking lot. And as long as they keep the air in the tires and the cobwebs out from under the axles, it's hard for us to prove they're inoperable, but they haven't moved in years and years. And so I think there are a number of residences where we deal with that citywide, and I think this would help to address that issue.
Okay, the only reason I bring it up is because my, my concern is similar to what Councilmember Turner was speaking of. It wasn't too, too terribly long ago, we were facing issues where there was a small park and people were parking in front of other folks' homes to go to the park because the park had no parking. And if this forces people to put their cars out into the street, that's only going to get worse. So I don't know what the balance is, I don't know, but if you have extended driveway, you know, 75 feet long, something like that, I personally don't understand why we would want to limit the parking there in the driveway if there's room to get cars in and out and still, but I don't know. I guess we don't have a perfect solution for everything, we just don't. But I do question if this is not the biggest problem that we've been dealing with, this is something that we need to do today or try to come up with a little bit better plan, but.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to make clear that you still can park in a circular driveway? Yes or no?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, you can park in a circular drive temporarily. It's not for long-term parking.
That's what was my concern. We have a circular driveway and often visitors will park in the circular driveway, so I wanted to know that, that would be legal. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Well, and Councilmember Houndler brought this up, and now Councilmember Clark has as well, but generally speaking, I'm not aware, I can't visualize any circular driveways that don't in fact go in front of the livable portion of the home, and therefore, they're not legitimate parking places. Now, does that mean that you, a guest couldn't park there and get away with it or, you know, not be an issue? That's probably acceptable. But as far as day in, day out, overnight, regular parking, the circular driveway, if it goes in front of the livable portion of the home, isn't a legitimate parking space, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that is correct.
Right, and it kind of goes back to my old saying that just because you pave it doesn't mean you can park on it, you know? And there's driveways and there's parking areas, and they're not necess, they don't necessarily overlap perfectly. Thanks.
So if I may, Mayor, members of the council, what Mr. Bowling was whispering was that long-term parking is not clearly defined in the code, and so that would be something we would need to address.
So my memory is not perfect. It's never been perfect. It's not due to my age. It's never been perfect, but I don't recall this limiting the number of vehicles in correlation to the square footage of the living space, having been discussed by the code committee. I think that if, before the council would move forward on it, I would like to respect the code committee and give them a chance to discuss it and have input because we can't think of everything here. And the issue of long-term has been raised, and, and that may in fact be a better pathway to regulating vehicles that, that are legally parked but never move, and, you know, that if they aren't being moved, then that would be considered long-term parking and it may not be permitted in our residential neighborhoods. So I'd like to see if we could let the code committee noodle that around a little bit. Thank you.
And then I'm going to come back, and I do like the 500 square feet better than the 750. So I'd like clarification, is that what we would be giving consensus on, 500 or 750?
Mayor, members of the council, hearing from Councilmember Turner, I'm happy to take this to the code review committee and come back with a recommendation at a different time, if that's acceptable.
My only other thought, there's maybe a determination on what long-term is. To me, if it was six days or something like that, anything longer than that, to me, would be long-term. Less than that could be somebody at your house visiting for just a few days.
Thank you, Mayor. The square footage thing, I'm a little, I'm just trying to make sense of, let's say you have an acre property and you've got a 1,500-square-foot home, but you've got a 1,500-square-foot shop. The shop's not just necessarily livable space, but how do you just take, so then literally you only have three parking spaces because you're only basing it on 500 feet per vehicle of livable space? Or how would that work?
So Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaf, as it was written in Fountain Hills and what we will review with the code review committee, if the council would like us to, is that language exactly? Is it livable space or is it constructed usable space?
Okay, yeah, I think going back to, Mayor, if I could, going back to code committee is probably a good idea. In my opinion.
No, we got a consensus on that.
And that concludes my presentation for the day.
Sir?
Presentation to amend the city code to provide court-ordered abatement.
Mayor, members of the council, here for this presentation is our code official, Tim Bowling. He'll lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. St. John. Mayor, members of the council, what we're looking for today is just to add one more tool to the toolbox for code compliance to address just some of the very egregious violations that we come across once in a great while. We have Arizona revised statute gives cities and towns the authority to create an ordinance that allows us to abate properties that are in violations. We have chapter 25, which is a nuisance code that gives us the authority to clean properties, and right now, chapter 2523 addresses vacant properties. This is our clean and lean program. We do about 60 to 70 properties a year through our lean We do about 60 to 70 properties a year through our lean, clean and lean program. Right now, it's vacant properties, it gives us the authority to abate. We put a lien on the property against the ownership, plus 10%, and, but it does not apply to occupied properties. Every once in a while, we have an occupied property that needs to be cleaned and leaned, if you would, but we need a process to do that. This is a property that we had, and the owner of the property was determined to be Rule 11 by the court. Rule 11 means that the owner does not, is not competent to stand trial, so you can't file criminal charges against the owner. We could write civil citations for this, going through the court for a civil citation. The judge has the ability to either be responsible or not responsible and assess a fine, but under civil proceedings, the judge doesn't have the authority to require abatement or any other remedy to take place. That has to take place in a criminal proceedings. If you can't file criminal charges against the owner, then the judge doesn't have the authority to issue an abatement. This is a property that was in this condition for several years. It was in a cul-de-sac. We finally were able to remedy it, going through building safety and declaring the property unfit to occupy. It did get resolved, but it was in this condition for several years. This is another property where the owners are in their upper 80s, and we have filed criminal charges against the female owner of the property, and during, while we were waiting for a court date, she passed away. The male owner of the property is, again, in his upper 80s and has serious health conditions. The reality of what's going on here is the kids and the grandkids of the elderly couple are creating this situation. We're not sure whether they live there. It doesn't appear that they live there. They're just using this property to bring these items in. Again, this is another property in a cul-de-sac. So we have filed criminal charges against the elderly man. We're waiting for a court date, but I'm not optimistic that that is going to come to some form of resolution. So if we had a court-ordered abatement opportunity here, we could hire a contractor, clean the property, and put a lien on the property, just as we would as if it was vacant. This is a proposed addition to Glendale City Code, Chapter 25. First of all, it gives the court the jurisdiction to issue orders permitting the city to abate conditions that constitute a violation and provision of the ordinance. This is, sorry for the small print, we tried to get it all on one slate, slide, but this is the court-ordered abatement language. It is existing in other jurisdictions that use this process for demolitions and to correct other egregious violations, most commonly on occupied properties. And again, anytime you create an ordinance that's going to go through the court, you have to create an opportunity for appeals. So this is, this would also be added to the code to provide a vehicle for appeal. And with that, I may be happy to answer any questions.
Looking for consensus?
Mayor, yes, looking for consensus, please.
Consensus?
Yes.
Go. City manager's report.
Mayor, members of the council, just two quick items. Well, less than 10 days from now, on May 6th, the Mariachi Passion kicks off our Live at Murphy Park series. We're excited about this on a number of fronts. As you know, we, we'd hoped to kick off our Live at Murphy Park series last year, and then the thing called the pandemic showed up, and we're excited this year because this is something we've been working on for some time, and it's also starting to show an indication that we're attempting to get back to some sense of normality. But we want to invite the council down. We have 16 program concerts for the month of, month of May. The merchants are doing a great job of trying to build momentum around this and have done some very creative things around marketing, and so, again, want to encourage you to let your citizens know through your newsletters and through other communication, and we hope to see you down here on the kickoff for on Thursday, May 6th. The second thing is, you may have read recently, is that we've, the Department of Water Resources and the Central Arizona Project have recently publicized through a joint announcement regarding anticipated water condition on the Colorado River system, which could include going to a Tier One water shortage. And we'll be sending a memo out to the council today that will give you quite a bit of detail on that. What we want to make sure we communicate to our citizens is that a Tier One does not mean that we have a water shortage here in Glendale. We have a very diverse and robust water portfolio that includes not only the Colorado River system, but the Salt River Project, surface water, reclaimed water, and groundwater. And so we don't want our citizens to panic on this. We are closely monitoring this, as are most jurisdictions. Again, we'll have additional detail in your inbox today on this, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to our Water Services Division. And with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. City attorney's report?
Mayor and council, nothing to report, other than just a heads up, in two weeks, you'll be having on the agenda consideration with regards to the consultant for redistricting, so you'll be seeing that come forward. Thank you.
Next items, council items of special interest. Councilmembers have an opportunity to indicate topics that they'd like to have discussed by this council at a future workshop. Gerald Aldama?
Thank you, Mayor. Just asked that city manager work with Mr. St. John to return my original request, and Rick and I have already met several times on the newspaper boxes regulations. Thank you, Mayor.
Clark?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Helder?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Tomalchaf?
Yes, Mayor, I do have one thing. We've been discussing, the Valley Metro Board of Directors have been discussing the possibility of putting advertising on buses, on transit vehicles, and I know we've discussed here previously, I believe, bus stops, advertising on bus stops, but based on the presentation from Valley Metro, there is a pretty good return on advertising on buses, so I'd at least like to have staff bring it back to a workshop to see if we could offset some of the increasing costs for us to provide transit to our residents by allowing advertising with a, you know, with a strict policy of what type of advertising you could use. Phoenix has been doing it for a long time, and it's really difficult, people don't know the difference between Valley Metro buses and Phoenix buses, and we were told Phoenix nets about $1.6 million back on their advertising. So, I mean, we don't have as many buses as Phoenix, but we've got a pretty sizable fleet, so I'd at least like to explore the idea of possibly advertising on our city-owned transit vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner.
Nothing today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor? We could advertise on Phoenix buses and get their revenue, too. It is nice to start getting back to normal. I noticed a lot of our staff seem like they're real happy that they don't have to wear the masks inside, so that's nice. Okay, so can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion, the second, to go into executive discussion on the motion. Hearing, none, all in favor of what I am?
Aye.
Any opposed vote, and I apologize, have it, do have it. This council meeting is recessed for executive meeting.
Are you coming over here? I have a question.